We get everybody to take a seat, please. Yeah, you could have him on there. I'm gonna talk to him real quick. Mr. Scott, can you hear me?
I can, yes.
Okay, good. So, we're gonna restart this public hearing since everything was silent. So, Mr. Tate's gonna do his thing again, so everybody can hear it, and then we'll bring you back over, okay, to speak?
Okay, great, thank you.
I think Dana is just gonna mute you until that time. I, no, these guys here heard the rules on there, so that's gotta work. So, we're gonna, we'll start this public hearing over. I apologize to everybody out there that was watching. We had a system glitch, so we're gonna restart this public hearing. I'm gonna open this up in its portion of the transportation component only. So, I'm gonna ask the council, do you have any ex parte contact?
No, Mr. Mayor, sir.
Hearing none, the public hearing is now open, and Mr. Tate, you have the floor.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. Mark Tate, for the record, 1087 West River Street, Suite 310, Boise, Idaho, 83702. So, we're back here to talk a little bit about transportation. ITD had a fairly confusing letter in the packet last time. We have since got resolution to that issue as far as their comments on these applications. To recap, we did a traffic study with our original subdivision that included 290 units that was reviewed by ACHD and ITD. We had conditions placed on our project based on those units. With these applications, our total unit count is 41 units higher than that original subdivision and traffic study. Both ACHD and ITD have said that that, those additional units don't warrant an additional traffic study. And also, it's worth noting that 96 of the units are very small lot cluster product geared towards empty nesters that have a much lower traffic generation rate and trips don't take place at peak times, which is very important. So, that being said, I do have the letter here that I can read into the record. Sorry for the duplication and my terrible voice, but ITD has already reviewed a traffic impact study for the Moon Valley subdivision analyzing 290 units. ITD agrees with ACHD's determination that the addition of 41 units will not require another traffic impact study. The interagency agreement between ITD and STAR was not in place when your traffic impact study was originally reviewed. As such, ITD will not request proportionate share for your development and would accept the construction of an eastbound right turn lane at short road as sufficient mitigation for your development as originally requested in ITD's acceptance letter. These improvements will be required prior to occupancy of your 175th home. In order to construct a turn lane, you will need to acquire an encroachment permit from ITD. Please contact Shona Tonkin at ITD for assistance with the permit process. I think with that letter, it's fairly clear that they are satisfied with the condition that they've imposed upon us, which is a kind of a different program than you're under now, but we are still subject to that offsite improvement. So, with that, I would stand for any questions.
Any questions of council to staff or the applicant?
Not at this time.
Nope, okay, thank you. All right, and then we had Sean, just Mr. Scott was on the list, right? Can you, Mr. Scott, there we go, can you hear me, sir?
I can, yes, thank you.
Okay, so the testimony that you're gonna give on this three minutes testimony will be on the transportation component only for this because we closed the rest of the public hearing the last meeting on this, just so you're aware.
Okay.
All right.
My name is William Scott, address 567 South Palmer Lane, Eagle, Idaho, 83616. It's a private road just south of Moon Valley, between Moon Valley and the river, east of the Moon Valley developments. Concerned about the traffic component and safe access due to reviewing Ada County Highway Department's projections that the combined Riverstone and these two new proposed developments will cause a significant increase in traffic. The last study I read showed 133 vehicle trips per day with these developments. That's projected to grow to 3,550 vehicle trips per day. That's a 2,674% growth with, I believe, insufficient improvements to access prior to that development being completed. I know we're excited about the potential of the Highway 44 Palmer continuous flow intersection. However, in reviewing that style of intersection across the United States, all of the others have been built with cross streets that have significant length, and that intersection will be severely impeded due to the shortness of the Palmer, South Palmer Road, being only 900 feet long before cars have to stop at the stop sign at Moon Valley. So, I think that intersection will be severely reduced in its capacity. Recommend that that intersection be developed and that capacity be validated before any additional developments are approved to maintain appropriate access. Also concerned about traffic maps that the council has published on the city website showing building a road through my property and basically taking my property and tearing down a house that I built less than 12 months ago. So, I'd really like to understand from the council what additional access improvements will be completed prior to approving these proposed developments and confirmation that there are no plans to seize my property and tear down my home.
Any, was that it, Mr. Scott?
That is it, thank you.
Any questions or comments to Mr. Scott? Okay, we'll have Sean address the transportation component that you were asking about relating to that road, I believe, that goes through your property.
So, Mr. Mayor and Council, I did speak with Mr. Scott, and he pointed out that in our latest eCamp map that we adopted, we show a roadway running through his property and stubbing to the east side of the Moon Valley development from what would be Palmer extended south from to Moon Valley. And as we know from this, from this testimony and the approval of Moon Valley, that with the private roads, that road would never connect to Palmer Lane, so we just need to revise our eCamp map and take out that, that future connection because it's no longer appropriate. And I did explain that to Mr. Scott, and we will do that at our next update, so he won't have a road going through his living room.
Okay, thank you. Was that all lined up for the hearing? Okay. Mr. Tate, you want to readdress, rebut?
I also want to point out that Mr. Scott did sign both.
Hearings?
Both hearings.
And I believe you're speaking on both hearings, but you're going to make decisions individually.
Right, right.
Mark Tate again, for the record, and thank you, Sean, for addressing the concern about seizure regarding the traffic volumes. As Mr. William Scott pointed out, currently 133 trips per day on Moon Valley Road is extremely, extremely low. So, as a percentage increase, it does seem extraordinarily high, but from such a low number, it is bound to sound pretty high. The traffic volumes, as far as functionality of the streets, are studied by ACHD. ACHD in their traffic study found all of the streets and intersections to be functioning properly. We did agree to the improvement for the turn lane at short, and other than that, ACHD and ITD are comfortable with how the intersections are functioning and how the streets are functioning. We will be doing our frontage improvements as part of ACHD's improvement conditions. And then it's also worth noting, you know, ITD being the entity that has jurisdiction over State Street is working on the, I think, more detailed plans regarding Highway 16 and State Street as well that I think the city's engaged in. Questions?
Any questions of the applicant or staff? Okay, thank you, sir. So, we're gonna close the public hearing. The council can deliberate on these. We got two different applications. We gotta, we gotta approve each separately, correct, Chris? Together, okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Keys?
I believe at the last meeting, I was the one who stirred the pot on the transportation issues, and I had some questions about the proportion share agreement and how that was all to play into this. I think that my concerns have been adequately addressed, and I'm ready to move forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman, I mean.
Before you make your motion, I would like to include in the development, the modification for the development agreement, the setback, the setbacks for the development, and it will apply to the entire Moon Valley or what they're calling Riverstone development. And if you just mentioned that, we're gonna include that, I've got that document, and I'll put that in the in the development agreement to be signed by the applicant and the city.
Deliberations, motions, anything?
I'm just very happy we're not going through Mr. Scott's lawn or house. I would never entertain a motion for that, ever.
I too am satisfied with the ITD response. Thank you for working through that.
So, we have two, we have two hearings, the Moon Valley Estates subdivision, which is a zoning with the DA and a modification, DA modification and preliminary plat, correct, Sean? Okay, or I'm sorry, annexation and zoning with a DA, DA modification and preliminary plat. And then we have the Moon Valley Commons subdivision with a preliminary plat and a DA mod, correct? Any further discussion?
No, I was also gonna say I'm also satisfied with the answers from our traffic. ITD and all that, it's, I'm actually glad Councilman Keys brought that up. It was something I think needed to be resolved, was the last hanging chat, and it seems to have been resolved, so. Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion, I gotta see this, I don't have the right one pulled up. Make a motion to approve Moon Valley Estates subdivision annexation and development agreement, which is line item A under our old slash new business.
Okay, we got a motion?
Second. And preliminary plat, excuse me. I retain my second.
Do we need to add the modifications that Sean was talking about into that?
Oh, yes, with all modifications as noted by ITD and Sean. Plus all conditions we've agreed upon prior.
And will you revise your second?
I revise my second accordingly.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. Moon Valley Commons subdivision, preliminary plat, and DA mod.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Keys?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Moon Valley Commons subdivision, preliminary plat, and development agreement mod, PP-20-05 and DA-20-02 mod with conditions as staff recommended.
Is it 22-06 or 22-05? Because I have 06 on my document.
I have 06 on mine as well.
Well, Moon Valley Estates is 06, Moon Valley Commons is 05. I think we just did Estates, now we're Commons, correct?
Well, 06 is the annexations at 20-06 and the preliminary plats at 20-06. With the letters being different designations, they could very well be ended 06, both, but I'd have to, I just couldn't find it.
I just pulled up last, the last agenda and pull the numbers off that.
Are we all right then? I just wanna make sure, make sure it's all legit, all right? Okay, we got a, okay, so we have a motion and a second? Do we have a second?
I did second, or I will second.
We have a motion and a second? Do we have any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries, thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to public hearing 6C, which is the Rossite Farms subdivision. And this is a continuation of our hearing, but we gotta rehear because this material changes to it, correct? There are. Well, we did table it, but there was, I mean, when you're adding commercial and moving your commercial around and stuff, wouldn't that be a material, a bigger material change to have to open it up? For the commercial purposes? Okay. Correct. Okay? No, correct.
So, we could take public testimony on the changes? Is that what I'm hearing?
With that said, I'm gonna open the public hearing. Do we have any ex parte contact?
None.
None.
Mr. Mayor? I've seen some discussions on social media. I, you know, I haven't responded to them, but, you know, I, there's just been a lot of stuff out there, and I just want to disclose that there's been conversation in the community that I've been exposed to.
Okay, thank you.
I think what I've seen has been concerns about the comprehensive plan and how it applies to the boundary of the northern part of this property and primarily. I think that's basically all I've seen, is that type of conversation.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Becky, you ready? And this is the one you want, correct?
Yes.
And I think there is a mouse there. Is there a mouse sitting there that you can go through it yourself? No.
I don't think so.
Okay, well, I'll do the clicking. Okay, we're okay, go ahead.
Okay.
That's mine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Becky McKay with Engineering Solutions, business address 1029 North Rosario and Meridian. I'm representing Toll Southwest on this particular application that's before you. If you want to switch to the next screen. So, as indicated initially, we had our public hearing back in February. There were some issues that were brought up concerning transportation, short term and long term transportation issues, and then the issue of providing some mixed use component beyond the neighborhood commercial that was initially proposed. Idaho Transportation Department had been in conversations with the City of STAR and their staff. They were evaluating the new Floating Feather State Highway 16 intersection to determine what possibilities were out there for a permanent type overpass for Floating Feather across State Highway 16 as provided. So, just to kind of refresh, we have State Highway 16 here along our eastern boundary. We have the foothills ditch on our northern boundary. We have Pollard Lane here, the Klondog Drain, the DD2 roadway that goes north and south from Floating Feather down here. Right now, Floating Feather terminates here. In the Ada County Highway District Capital Improvement Plan, they show an extension of Floating Feather and then a continuation in alignment going through Eagle's area of impact. One of the things that is currently underway as far as improvement, transportation improvements are concerned, is at Plummer Road. The signal at State Highway 44 is currently under construction, I'm happy to say, and should be operational by the end of July or sooner. So, that just kind of gives you an overview of the development. If you could switch to the next one. So, this was, I put this screen in here, this is what the council saw back in February, and they said, you know, we want to put a pause, hit the pause button here. We want to see what Idaho Department of Transportation comes up with. We want you to kind of evaluate what you can do to add additional mixed use and neighborhood commercial component and then see what possibilities are here as far as accommodating a future permanent access. So, this was the plan that was brought before you and deferred in February. We did do a workshop in May as we gathered additional information from commercial real estate brokers, information from Idaho Transportation Department. Kittleson and Associates, our transportation experts, worked on some different designs, what they called a tight diamond, what they called a dual roundabout or a peanut design, which was one of the ideas that came out of Idaho Transportation Department. So, if you'll switch to the next screen. This was what was kind of sketched at Idaho Transportation Department, what they call a dual roundabout system here and here. This allows for, when there is an overpass, that there will be an exit and coming into a roundabout. Then they could go back the other way, come down here. It also allows for entrance onto State Highway 16. So, as State Highway 16 north of 44 transitions to an expressway and not just a state highway like what we see north or south of 44 in 2026, there would be a potential for permanent access. Now, I remind you that Idaho Transportation Department has granted this access, a right in, right out, and left in. They've also required that we do a northbound turn lane and then a southbound D cell lane, and that we put a median in also. And in addition to that, they asked for a monetary mitigation fee be paid for future impact on the 44 and 16 intersection and future improvements. So, one of the things that obviously the council was concerned with is if the project were approved as initially shown, it may cut off the opportunities in the future for this to materialize, if it is feasible. We don't know that ITD wouldn't commit. They said that they wouldn't allocate any funding towards it, but they wouldn't, they would allow us to at least look at the option and take it into consideration. If you go to the next screen. So, what we did is, we basically planned for what we consider the worst or ultimate right of way that could be required here to help facilitate that long term plan of permanent access off of State Highway 16 to the City of STAR. Now, the City of Eagle has indicated that on their side, they have entitled projects. When we did, we did a joint meeting with them, they did not seem inclined to require a roundabout or additional right of way be preserved for the east leg of this design. However, it was important to the council, important to us, that we come up with a plan that would, I think, be closer to your vision and protect the options, and that's what we tried to do here. So, one, we allocated for the ultimate right of way 115 feet from center line all along State Highway 16. We don't know that's what they'll initially take or purchase, but we're, like I said, we are basically preparing for the worst case scenario. Then for the peanut design or the dual roundabout, we've allocated additional right of way here and here beyond what Ada County Highway District is requiring, and then a roundabout right of way here. Initially, we had our 8.23 acres of neighborhood commercial located here, right there at Pollard on the south side of Floating Feather. One of the comments that the council said was, you know, we would like that to not just be neighborhood commercial, but be more of a mixed use and have the ability to, if we do retain long term access to State Highway 16, that we could have some type of larger commercial, not just neighborhood commercial. So, what we've done here is we allocated, we have 14, or 4.23 acres of neighborhood commercial, and then we did do a concept because it was recommended, you know, provide a concept showing how that would function. We still have the daycare, the assisted living, some retail, some office. And then in addition to that, we have the, the mixed use. And that mixed use area right here is 12.74 acres. So, in total, what we have allocated here is almost 17 acres, right here in this northwest corner, or northeast corner, I'm sorry. That location was chosen, we talked to some different commercial real estate people, even though we didn't get a lot of positive reactions about the viability of this as highway commercial. They said if you were to allocate land for highway commercial, we would recommend that it be on this corner versus on this corner here. So, I'd kind of like to go through, it's in your staff report, but I'd kind of like to address the fact that, so we allocated, we had 5.6 or 1.6 acres of right of way for future Floating Feather. Then we preserved another 3.41 acres on both sides to allow for those lanes to come off of Highway 16 and the roundabout. As I indicated, we have our neighborhood commercial component with a site plan, and then we have our mixed use. So, I think one of the things that was brought up by the council is, you know, 15 acres, we'd like to see 15 acres. We want that mixed use component. We want this to be a sustainable neighborhood. We want, obviously, users that will support the neighborhood, but also the potential for some highway commercial uses. Our original design, we had direct lot access off of Floating Feather. Here, we take access through our collector roadway, and the access would come in here with a secondary emergency access to the north. We changed our preliminary plat. We added seven commercial lots to the plan, and we eliminated 43 single-family dwellings. So we pushed everything to the south. There were 13 lots in here that we eliminated. And then we eliminated additional lots up here to accommodate this mixed-use for a total of 43 lots. One of the other things that was brought up was the pocket park we had with our amenities to the north was located here. We did include this pocket park up here on this north boundary with playground, gazebo for an amenity. We also came in and added some linear open space here. That will also help with the amenities and the pathway system, which can go north and south and then come out to this intersection here at Pollard Lane. Sorry, this is my second hearing in two days. I was at Eagle last night, getting a little weary. The central amenity, one of the questions that was brought up is how we calculated our open space. The council said, you know, we have usable open space, we have total open space. We require 15% total open space, 10% usable open space. We don't feel that some of the things that you counted as usable should be counted. So we went back through and we made adjustments and we increased our open space lots. So, for example, this central open space with the pool facility, the playground equipment, the pathways, gazebos, we have our micro paths leading in there, that increased from 2.72 to 2.92 acres. The easterly common area over here on this side, we had 1.21 acres. That jumped to 1.82 acres. Also, I broke these blocks with pedestrian pathways, getting better connectivity on an east-west direction here. And then a connection, there's a micro path that goes both north and south. So all of these residents have very convenient access to that area. And then I took out the Foothills Ditch area. I took out the Klondike Drain. I took out the Middleton Mill. I took out any storm drainage lots, that that is their sole purpose. I eliminated any N-block areas. That constituted eight acres. So I removed eight acres out of my calculations. And our total open space that is usable and meets the definition within your ordinance is 24.45 acres or 15.3%. So we have 15.3% of usable open space. We have 32.45 total acres of open space or 20 and a half percent. So that's one thing that I wanted to mention that we're quite proud of. The other thing that we did is we took this, we had like a cul-de-sac here. So when we eliminated this neighborhood commercial component here and moved it up to the north, then we created this loop here. I also went through and kind of evaluated the streets. And one of the things that I looked at was, this was a looped street, and I was able to make it a cul-de-sac and meet all your requirements. And then I had a secondary street that went north and south, and we took that street out. So there were two streets that we eliminated. One was Patmore, which I changed to a cul-de-sac. And then Garner Avenue was eliminated. So I dropped 600 linear feet of street out of this project, which obviously helps with drainage, makes for a better neighborhood, less cost. The density of the residential development, and the density is calculated only based on the residential. It's not taken into consideration the neighborhood component or the mixed-use component. We went from 2.87 dwelling units per acre to 2.75. Our minimum lot size increased from 5,800 square feet to 6,000. And our average lot size within this project jumped from 8,500 up to 8,832 square feet. The number of common lots, just by the revisions we made, dropped from 70 to 60, but that really didn't impact our open space. Another thing that we looked at, I noticed that you'd amended your UDC requiring within the knuckles that we have landscape islands. So we did add those in to bring this into compliance with that update of your UDC. One of the other things I'd like to mention is the project, we do have a mixture of attached and detached sidewalks in here. None of the eight-foot landscape parkways along the local streets are counted in my open space, neither in my total open space or my usable. So that's just above and beyond. So from our, you know, perspective, we believe that we've made significant improvements to this plan based on your staff, based on your recommendations. And I think Toll hopes that this demonstrates their willingness to obviously create a development that furthers the vision of Starr and leaves that door open for future permanent access and not just short-term access. Now, we don't know that right-in, right-out, left-in may be there for 20 years, but we don't know that. So, you know, we're leaving the door open. And I think that was the council's intent when they started asking us those hard questions. And so we have spent the past few months working very, very hard on this plan to come up with what we think is a better plan, a more exceptional plan, and a plan that meets your comprehensive plan. Staff had asked that we send our revised plan to Ada County Highway District. We did that. They did review it. They updated their staff report, updated their conditions of approval, so it matches this plan. We are in agreement with their staff report. We also sent it to ITD. And Sonia with Kittleson Associates did get an email response from Erica Bowen saying that ITD was satisfied with what we were providing. ACHD indicated in their staff report that they're not making any promises as far as, you know, they're not paying for any additional right-of-way to accommodate this. But they accept the fact that the City of Starr is looking to preserve options for the future. In Sean's staff report, I'd just like to mention one thing. Sean, you had in there that roadway widths shall be 33 feet. When we had the meeting, you and I, with Chief Tominski, Chief Tominski said he was comfortable with the local streets having a 33-foot improved width and all the collector roadways having a 36-foot improved width. That's the way all the other cities are. It's not in the conditions, it was just in the text. Deb Nelson, the attorney for my clients, also provided some conditions for the development agreement. So in those conditions, Sean had asked us to come up with some acceptable commercial uses that would be compatible with the single-family development. So I did go through your ordinance. I went through them, eliminated some, sent them to my client. My client eliminated some additional ones. We wanted to list those. Obviously, if they require conditional use within your ordinance, I noted that on my exhibit that then that would be applicable. A second item on the DA was the multifamily use. If a multifamily use were proposed within that mixed-use area, if we're unable to obviously get some type of highway commercial or attract highway commercial, that that would require a conditional use permit. And then we wanted to memorialize that $874,625 in traffic mitigation that we're paying for to the City of Starr. That translates into roughly $2,053.11 per buildable lot. My clients are in agreement that that would be paid on a per-lot basis with each phase submitted prior to the signature of the City of Starr on that final plat. So we thought that that made more sense from an accounting perspective and implementation. Deb wanted to obviously indicate that, setting aside this additional right-of-way, that if things change over time and it's determined that that intersection design, the peanut or the roundabout, is not feasible. Because one of the things that was stressed by Erica Bowen and Caleb Lakey is their primary concern is the carrying capacity of State Highway 16 and high volumes of traffic at high speeds. And so they don't want anything installed that would impede that traffic. And so they could not say that the peanut design would or would not. They kind of said it may be possible, but we would have to obviously do a lot more research and run more calculations. And Sonia's here this evening from Kittleson Associates, if you would like her to talk about that, because she's definitely the traffic expert. One of the things that we had concerns about with the mixed-use is the ability to revisit that if it is determined that this is not viable. The worst thing we can do is obviously set aside land, wasteland, and nothing happens as far as the visions, the dreams that we have. Land is a finite resource. We're phasing this project so that the latter phases are to the east, so to buy us time. You know, buy us four, five years. A lot can happen in four or five years. Maybe there's some new design that none of us have even thought about that's been used somewhere else that could benefit. And it may reduce the need for this much additional right-of-way. We don't know that. But what we've done here is we have allocated for the worst, largest footprint that would be necessary. If, I think the mayor made a statement about the neighborhood commercial component, that that is integral. And the only negotiable thing would be, obviously, that mixed-use. If we came back to revisit that or if this additional right-of-way became unnecessary, then this plat could move up north and those 13 lots could be recovered. But obviously, that would take application before the city to come back before you. And depending on how the conditions read and the development agreement reads, you know, it would either require a DA modification or a modified preliminary plat. We did provide an Exhibit B that if that peanut is not viable, what would happen on the south? That's part of Exhibit B. Deb Nelson's here to answer questions you may have about the development agreement. And I guess, lastly, I'd like to say thank you. We appreciate the opportunity to get it right, and I think we've got it right. This is a good project, and we've worked hard with all the agencies. Your partner agencies have been very kind, very conscientious in working with us, providing us information and ideas. And your staff has also been grand. What's before you right now meets the neighborhood residential designation on your comp plan. It's three to five dwelling units per acre. We're at 2.75. It meets the compact residential, which is six to 10. And now the mixed-use component of office, commercial, or residential also complies. So we'd ask that you would support the project. We're excited to move forward, and I stand for any questions.
Council got questions, Ms. Becky?
Mr. Mayor.
We got Councilwoman Jennifer.
I beat you to it. So the city has recently put together a couple of signs, like entry signs. And I was wondering if you would be willing to let us put one of our signs maybe in that virtual area while it's open?
Yes, we already discussed that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Councilwoman Solm...
Solmanson.
Solmanson. So this was...
That is right, thank you, I forgot. Sorry, thank you for reminding me.
That was only February.
Came up with. So they said, yes, they would definitely want to, obviously, identify when people come down State Highway 16, that you are entering the City of Starr and be proud of it. Yes.
Great, thank you. Another question I have is, you mentioned a multi-use pathway along Drainage District Number Two. Just curious, have they agreed to that pathway?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Solmanson. I'm tongue-tied tonight. Yes, I did meet with Drainage District Number Two's board. I have met at the site multiple times with Alan Funkhauser. So on the north side is their maintenance road. It's a gravel access, but that can be used for pedestrians and bikes too. But on the south side, we will be building a five-foot asphalt pedestrian pathway, and then we loop it back into the site at different locations. So it loops in here and here. And then when we build our collector roadway system and have alternative access, then we will go to the property owners, get their consent to vacate. And the plan is to vacate this portion of Pollard. And then that's going to be a multi-use pathway. It would have a gate here for Alan to get down to the Middleton Mill and a gate for the gentleman that owns the property here to get his farm equipment in. So those would be the two people that would have access, vehicular access. But it would be 20 feet wide is what the asphalt is. So we'd go in and kind of spruce it up, and it'd be a big, nice, multi-use pathway.
Great, thank you. And then my last question is, do you have a plan for streetlights along Floating Feather?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Solmanson, we did not submit any streetlight plans. I think Sean added a condition that it would be required at final plat. I think you guys require decorative lights, and you also have your dark-skY policy. So we work with your staff as far as what illumination along that new section of Floating Feather would look like.
Because I would anticipate, you know, quite a bit of foot traffic, especially down the road when we have the commercial and then the middle school and possibly a high school up the road. So lighting is important on that.
Yeah, lighting is important for safety purposes. Typically, at the intersections, we have the streetlights. And like you said, since we'll be having a sidewalk on both sides and then sidewalk along Pollard on the east side of Pollard, that would make for safer route to schools, yes.
Great, thank you.
Councilwoman Keys?
Mr. Mayor. So you mentioned the magic words that will be on the lips of every citizen in the City of Starr within 72 hours. High-density housing. So that's a big hot-button issue in our community. And so I have a couple of questions about that. If you're going to consider high-density housing, that mixed-use area, where would you put it in there? Are you talking about the whole area or one-third, as our comprehensive plan says?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Keys, we have no plans for the mixed-use area. All that is, is what we call a bubble plan, which says mixed-use. So we would have to come back before this body with a site-specific plan and a mixture of uses, just like your ordinance and your comprehensive plan require, that you can't have a single use. The mixed-use can't be used just for high-density residential, that you have to have a mixture of uses. We have nothing in mind at this time, no plans, nothing.
Okay, thank you. The second question I have is, I know right before the meeting started, you were handed a letter. a letter.
Yes.
And I'm wondering if you'd like to respond to how you think that things work along our northern boundary in compliance with the comprehensive plan? And if you'd rather wait and comment at your rebuttal, that would be fine. But at some point, I'd like to hear how you think that complies with the comprehensive plan.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Keys, Mr. Mayor, if you could click through a few...
Keep going.
Yep. Yep. One more. Okay, so, this, we took some pictures out on Mr. Rostai's property here. Mr. and Mrs. Rostai, sorry. I don't want to get in trouble. This is showing the north boundary here. And as you can see, along, there's the foothills ditch. It's a high-bank ditch, and there is a whole bunch of trees along there. On the other side of those trees, you see some trees, and then there's homes. Those homes to the north are on the other side of those trees. If you'll switch to the next one. We provided the staff, based on the elevation of those homes, they are, the average distance is 268 feet. Their lot lines do not adjoin us. If you look in your comprehensive plan, it talks about adjacent lots. Their lot lines are up here. This is vacant property. And there's 200, a minimum of 268 feet of distance from home to home. And then, as you can see, that Rostai property, I think it's, there's 20, 22 feet of drop from north to south, but they're even elevated higher. So here's the line of sight, here's the house, so they'll still have their views. If you want to go to the next slide? So you can see here, here's those line of trees, right here, along the foothills ditch. You can see there's a home here, there's a home here. This is 266 feet. This is 272 feet. And you can see that their lots stop right here. They do not adjoin us. This property here is developable. You could put a street right here, like a cul-de-sac, and create a lot that faces this way, and create a lot that faces that way. And so one of the tests, as far as transitioning the lot sizes, is, one, does the larger lot adjoin you? Is it contiguous? The answer is no. Two, is there, is the property between you potential for redevelopment? And the answer is yes. Plus, we have a significant elevation difference, and we have that row of trees, and we have the separation with the foothills ditch. The other thing we did, this was the old plan, when we made this exhibit, so we took that open space, and we put that open space lot up there in the north. And so we did reduce the number of lots along the north boundary, as recommended by your staff.
Okay, thank you.
That's all.
I just had a comment. It was, Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman.
Thank you. I've been breaking those rules all day. Sorry about that, sir. First off, thank you for that visual, because that was one of my questions. And I never even, even though I saw the maps there, I just didn't make the elevation connection either. That's really embarrassing, because I used to be an artillery fort observer, and knowing where I was and my elevation was critical to my life. But that was 35 years ago, so. I also am very appreciative that you've taken the worst-case scenario for the peanut or circle, or whatever we call it. And I know that we've had many conversations where you said Eagles doing this, and we said, "So what?" You know, I was paraphrasing. But I think that's good. And also, there's two things I really like to see in larger neighborhoods. And this is not the largest, this is just a larger neighborhood. And that's the residential, commercial residential, I think that's critical. That's, and I'm glad you said that's a non-negotiable, because to me, that really is. But also, you mentioned, what do we do with this mixed-use part? Personally, I would love if this passes to condition that, that you cannot change that to anything other than commercial until the other nine phases are developed, and then come back to us if it absolutely is just not panning out. Okay?
It would be the last phase, anyway. So I think that's acceptable.
So it's probably any that way, anyway, huh?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that.
So I have a, were you done?
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Keys?
Actually, I had one more question.
Sorry.
So I noticed, let me scroll back down to here. Shows the landowner to the north on that 21-acre parcel, has a Michael D. Haggood. But the Ada County Assessor shows that parcel's owned by somebody else. Has that recently changed hands that you know of?
Yes. Yes, Sam, Mr. Rostai indicates, yes, it has.
Okay.
So I think we submitted what, last year? When we submitted? Shaun? Yeah, so it's been a considerable amount of time has passed since we initially checked with the assessor.
Okay, so the name that's on the plat that you have is the original owner or the new owner?
That is the original owner.
New owner is Josh Kenny.
Josh Kenny is the new owner, sir.
And do you have any idea what his intentions are to do with that property?
Mr. Rostai can address that, because he's had conversations with him. So I would, I defer to him.
So we'll have you, have him sign up on here, and he can address it on here. Perfect. I do have a couple of questions for you.
Yes, sir.
So the intent for all the pathways and sidewalks is to either have them concreted or asphalted for the pathways, correct? For the whole thing?
That is correct.
Nothing's going to be gravel or any of that kind of stuff?
The only, if you want to go back to the, go back up, the only, the only thing that would be gravel would be the access...
How far?
Just go to the colored one.
Okay.
The access on the north boundary for maintenance. Alan likes those to be gravel. If I put asphalt down, then he says his equipment tears it up. His excavator.
He educated me yesterday.
Yeah, he educates all of us.
So...
So that would be gravel. So we'd go in, we'd add additional gravel, make sure it's 14 feet wide. He requires 25 feet from top of bank for maintenance and access on both sides, but he has one side that he typically maintains the facility. And we have provided for that in our plan.
Okay. My second comment here is on the, when we do the development agreement, and you talked about this already with the proportionate share with ITD. You know, I went down and I broke this down by number, I counted your houses and everything, and broke it down into the nine phases by the number of houses that are in each phase. I would like to put the dollar amount in that development agreement per phase on there that we have started with right here.
That would, that would be acceptable.
So, I mean, it's going to be, it's going to be different, obviously, because you have, I mean, sometimes 49 houses, 38 houses, 74, you know, so it's going to be proportionate to the number of houses that you're building. So, okay. So I can give this to you, right, to include?
I have a phasing plan with the number of lots per phase that I can provide to Shaun.
Okay, perfect.
It's also, it's in that, it's in the PowerPoint that I gave Shaun a hard copy of.
And I just want to say, I appreciate you guys working on maintaining that access for the future intersection. And I know there's so many people that are negative about it, but I'm not like that. I'm one that's very, very eager to get it done, and I don't often take no, and I will continue to find a way to make it happen. So leaving that open for us allows us to have some real viable access to the highway system for us in the future. Because there's other developments that we came across yesterday on the Eagle side that may allow us to make that happen more. So, which is good. Okay?
Mr. Mayor, we, we support that. And the first step is getting Floating Feather built. Second step is establishing the access that the ITD is allowing us. And obviously, the third step would be taking it one step further and making it something permanent, meets your needs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go to the public comment period here on this, and we have Mr. Steve Young. Is he still here? There he is.
Hang on one sec, hang on one sec, sir. Hey, Ms. Dana, you want to see if they want to, if you want to, okay, thank you. Okay. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I'm Steve Young. I live at 906 North Pollard Lane. My wife and I own the 10 acres just to the south of the property there, between Sam Rostai and Mike Moyle. So it's kind of an uncomfortable position, but that's where I am. Anyway, I just wanted to say that my wife and I are very supportive of this. We were concerned, obviously, everybody was with growth. I'm a fourth-generation Idahoan, lived in Treasure Valley all my life, except school and Navy. And I'd love it to be farmland forever, but I know that we've got growth coming. And my, our concern is that it's a quality, a quality community. And Toll has a good reputation. I'm really pleased with the changes that I've seen compared with what they had last time. And I think this is much, much nicer than the 80 acres across the way with American Star that was approved earlier. So I just wanted to speak in favor of their proposal. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you for your service, too.
Mr. Ryan Catlin?
Good evening. Ryan Catlin, business address 950 West Bannock Street, Suite 420, Boise, Idaho, 83702. I'm a land broker with Idaho Commercial Brokerage. Been in this valley a long time. I've, I started this job as an intern in college, is all I've ever done, and it's all I know. Becky did a really good job. All I want to add is that independently, I did go out to different folks, not on behalf of Toll, not on behalf of Becky, and said, "Hey, if this commercial area is enlarged, what is the proper location in your estimation, whether it be on the north side or the south side of Floating Feather?" Right? You had some questions on Facebook. I don't have Facebook, so I, but I'm glad you brought it up. But I think the consensus from the developers in town that have active projects would be to have it on the north side. And I just want to reiterate that. Independently, I did make that effort. A lot of it is based on access and traffic flows. So I think, you know, again, thank you all. You've all spent a lot of time on this, and that's just what I wanted to add. So, thank you.
Thank you. We're going to try with, is... Mr. Prenn? Mr. Prenn, can you hear us? If you can, can you unmute?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great.
Is this Mr. Prenn?
Yes, it is.
If you could please, just state your name for us and your address, and then you have three minutes, sir.
Okay, great, thank you. My name is Michael Prenn. I live at 1875 North Mountain Vista Lane in Star, which is the subdivision directly to the north of the Rostai Farms' proposal. And I want to, you know, I'm the one that sent the letter, which I'm a little surprised that, seems like Becky got a copy of that, probably the letter you're talking about. And I want to correct a few things here. First of all, I don't think this does follow the comprehensive plan, because while the lots that are, that have houses on them in that subdivision do not abut against the foothills ditch, that lot, that big, open space that kind of goes around the four houses there, that is a lot, okay? And while there are not houses on there now, and there's no plans for immediately building any house, well, one's going on there, that's the Kennys', but while there's no plans for that, there's nothing precluding that from happening in the future. And also, the argument is to having trees, you know, that just, I mean, trees can be cut down, trees can die, you know, so to me, that doesn't really wash. I mean, why do we have a comp plan if we're not going to follow it? I mean, it says right in the comp plan, density is not exceeding one to two units per acre be encouraged in areas of floodplain and adjacent to existing residential lots of one acre and larger. That's exactly what's going on here. And not only that, but that northwest corner of the proposal that's over by the cemetery isn't a floodplain. So you have two reasons to change that, and I really think the applicant should go back and fix that. You know, there's been a lot of talk on social media about the comp plan. You know, that's the Bible. We have to stick to the comp plan, we have to go by that, and everybody's happy with that. And a lot of work was put into, you know, a lot of thought was put into this comp plan to use as a guide. And here, it seems like we're just throwing that out the window, because, well, we only have a few houses there, there are higher elevation, we have trees, et cetera, et cetera. But it still comes down to, you have tiny lots all along there, there is no transition, which is one of the things that Kevin Nielsen ran on as a campaign achievement, was getting that, getting that transition buffer language into the comp plan. So to me, I just feel like, you know, voting for this as-is, is you're just, you're just stomping all over that in the comp plan, and it really ought to be, really ought to go back to the table and redo that, and make those half-to-one-acre lots, like it clearly says. I mean, there's no room, no wiggle room in there, is the way I read it. So I'm not against growth, I think there's a lot of improvements here. I'm not against the commercial being up in that northeast corner, I think that's great, but, you know, okay. So I guess what I'm saying is, we're almost there, but I really feel like, you know, my subdivision and the property owners will kind of be thrown under the bus here, you know, if this isn't fixed. So please go back and fix it and vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prenn.
Thanks.
And do we have Michelle there? Okay. Ms. Michelle, if you can hear me, please unmute your, your system there, so we can ask you a question, if you want to speak. Michelle, can you hear me? Did she send you a message?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. All right, with that said, that was the, oh, wait, we were going to have Mr., are you the property owner to the north?
Yeah.
You can come up here. We'll sign you up on that, because we said that earlier. State your name and address, please, sir, for the record.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Josh Kenny. Our new address, we're not moved in yet, but is 8675 West Floating Feather Road here in Star. I'm open to questions. Councilman Keys, have you had, what were you wanting to know?
Mr. Mayor? So I guess my question is, is it your intention to add more lots onto that property going forward?
Right now, no. We're in the process of building our own personal home. I don't know exactly where it is on this plot, but probably about where that, that road comes right up the center. Just north of that, we're building our home. We also own another acre lot. As Michael Prenn said, it's actually a subdivision, even though that's a 22-acre parcel, it's Lot One of Magnolia Subdivision. We own another acre lot in there. And then we also own the two and a half acres that's directly north of the mixed-use parcel on this plot. And so, right now, our plan is to just build our personal home and to actually do agriculture on the rest of that parcel for now. We're reserving the right to develop as time goes on, but right now, that's not the plan in the immediate future.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
That it? That's it, thank you, sir. Okay, that's all we have for public testimony. Ms. Becky, do you want to rebut?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the... Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Becky McKay. Mr. Prenn indicated that the comprehensive plan is like the Bible. The comprehensive plan is a guiding document. It's been determined by the courts when they've evaluated comprehensive plans. The implementing document is your unified development code. Your comprehensive plan sets forth goals, sets forth recommendations, sets forth visions. And that's what comprehensive plans do. He did quote in here, densities not exceeding one to two units per acre are to be encouraged. Encouraged, that's the key word. In areas of floodplain, ridgeline development, hillside development areas, and where new residential lots are proposed adjacent to existing residential lots of one acre and larger and where those lots are not likely to be subdivided in the future. So first, I'd like to key on the word encouraged. That's important. So that obviously is discretionary. Secondly, there is a floodplain associated up there, but it's with the Foothills Ditch. They have had that analyzed by a floodplain expert, Angie Michaels. She is submitting to FEMA because it's kind of an error in the map because it's never flooded over there. And so they are amending the map and taking that area out of that floodplain. So that's not applicable. Secondly, Mr. Kenny indicated that the lot that adjoins us is twenty-two acres. Regardless of the fact that it's platted lot, it's still an undeveloped twenty-two-acre lot that has the potential to be developed in the future. The one-acre lots have significant separation from us, obviously horizontally and vertically. And the trees that are there... Trees, I mean, we don't have the intent to cut the trees down. They're adjacent to the Foothills Ditch. Typically, we try to save the trees. It makes the lots that we build that adjoin it more valuable. So I just don't see that one or two units per acre is applicable on the north boundary. I've already eliminated a significant number of lots within this development. And right now, we think we have a good plan. And we've put our open space on the north boundary as an additional buffer. So I ask that the council support it as proposed. We've really, really tried hard to please you guys, and that's what's before you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Keys. So often, the ditch companies will require you to remove the trees. Is that the case here?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Keys, I did go before the Foothills Ditch Board and the Middleton Mill Board. And they did not indicate that they wanted those trees removed. The only comment I received from Mr. Funkhauser was down on the Middleton Mill. There are some dead trees that sometimes fall over and then causes them significant problems. He wanted us to send out an arborist to evaluate some of those trees that are either dead or dying and kind of weed some of them out, but not to remove all the trees. Because it's really not, it's a nice, it has a nice natural character to it with the trees.
So...
But not along the Foothills Ditch, no.
So assuming that the ditch company does not require you to remove those trees, would you be willing to add it as a conditional approval that they would be retained?
Yes. He's the ditch company.
Well, that makes it easy then, doesn't it? And I won't stop shopping here tonight. That's right. Okay. Yeah, I was actually wondering why you were answering for the applicant, but now I get it.
I've been trying to keep Sam from talking all night.
There was also a recommendation, I think it was in a staff report, to about retaining open-style fencing along the north lot line so that it would be fireproof, something that wouldn't burn.
Yes, sir.
Is that something that you contemplate adding to your development agreement as well?
Yes, sir. That was a requirement of the Foothills Ditch, the Middleton Mill, and the Drainage District Number Two boards, that that be non-combustible fencing adjoining their facilities. Plus, we'd like them to be open vision in case a child gets in there that they can be seen and heard.
Okay, that's all the questions I have, Mr. Mayor.
Any further questions for Ms. Becky? Before we close the public hearing? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I just want to add one thing that didn't make it in the staff report. And it's the definition of transitional lot or property. And this is from the new UDC code that was approved back in March, February, February. Transitional lot or property, this is found forty-six of your UDC code. Transitional lot or property, the size of a new residential lot when being proposed adjacent to an established residential use. The ratio for lots adjacent to properties shall be determined on a case-by-case basis when considering the size of the development potential for the existing use. This shall not be required if separated by an existing roadway or large canal where the distance between new structures and existing structures equal or exceed one hundred feet. That was the basis for staff's support of the lots on the north. I want to get that in the record.
Thank you. All right. We'll close this public hearing and we'll go into deliberations. Anybody?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Keys?
So I'd like to acknowledge and tell Mr. Prenn I absolutely respect his comments. And I take our comprehensive plan pretty seriously. So I spent a little time in our comprehensive plan ahead of this meeting, quite a bit of time, actually. And I'd like to read from the plan. So Section eight point five point two D, policies related mostly to the rural agricultural planning areas. When urban density residential development is planned with lots that directly abut lots within a rural residential area, an appropriate transition is to be provided for the two abutting residential lot types. Transition must take into consideration site constraints that may exist and may include clustering of urban lots in order to provide an open space area, avoiding urban lots directly abutting rural residential lots, or may include the provision of a buffer strip avoiding urban lots directly abutting rural residential lots, which I think this project does, or may include setbacks within the urban lot similar to the rural residential lots directly abutting, or may include the provision of one-half to one-acre-sized lots directly abutting the rural residential lot. So, you know, the discussion, at least in this section, about one-half to one-acre lots is included as an "or," not as a must condition. The other part of the comprehensive plan I looked at that I think is pertinent here is eight point five point three B, policies related mostly to the urban residential planning areas, since this is an urbanizing area we're talking about here. And it says, low densities within the neighborhood residential land use are to be designed within the floodplain, ridgeline developable areas, hillside developable areas. Say that real fast three times. Where new residential lots are proposed adjacent to existing residential lots of one acre larger, where those existing larger lots are not likely to be subdivided in the future. That, I tell you, I struggled with that a little bit about what was going to happen with that twenty-one-acre lot. But we heard public testimony from Mr. Kenny tonight that he's clearly not precluding those being subdivided in the future. And I think that falls within the boundary of the language where it says that the lots are not likely to be subdivided in the future. I don't think that we can say that's the case here because he's indicated that he's retaining the option of doing that sometime in the future. So when I read those two parts of the comprehensive plan, and I put that together with the testimony that we heard from Mr. Prenn, frankly, I think the northern boundary is in compliance with our comprehensive plan. It's a... I don't think it's necessarily the first choice of the neighbor. I know it's not the first choice of the neighbors there, but I don't see a problem here with the compliance with our comprehensive plan as well as compliance with our ordinance. And Becky and the Toll Brothers and the rest of your staff, thank you, guys. You guys have worked your butts off in this, and we appreciate that.
Okay, further comments, discussion, deliberation?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to reiterate my facts. I'm very pleased, very pleased with how they've handled the possibilities of Floating Feather. And also to reiterate the open fence concept along the ditch, just a little fun fact. You burn your ditch next to a final fence, your final fence will burn forty-three times faster than your ditch itself because it's made out of basically petroleum. And I've brought that up twice now, sorry. I work fire. And I agree with what Councilman Key said about eight five two D. It's a... I think there is, these do not abut in the sense of they're touching. There isn't, there's a lot of buffer there. And I also appreciate the testimony of Mr. Brennan and his concerns. But also, I'm just happy to say that the commercial residential is in there. The overall density is far less than what it could be. They've taken the effort to remove forty-three units to accommodate our mixed-use requirements, the commercial residential requirements, and they've got good pathways in here. They've even put a little park up on the top. The fact that the usable open space is fifteen point three percent exceeds by fifty percent plus our usable open space. I think a lot has really changed in this thing. And I'm glad that we were able to table workshop and, you know, stick to our guns. And they've stuck to their points, and it looks like we found a compromise here that I think so much better than what we saw in February. That's my comments.
Okay, any further discussion?
All right, my turn. Yes, I would also echo those same, your keys and Councilman Hershey about the comprehensive plan. I too saw that in eight point five point two. And earlier today, when I was doing my homework, reading through this, and do agree that, you know, it does, it does meet our comp plan with that buffer zone there. I'm very satisfied with the changes that were made. I think that the pathway system, I looked at it pretty closely today, seeing if there was any missing places, you know, that, you know, kids or walkers, bicyclists, if, you know, they couldn't get through. And I didn't see any, so I'm very, very pleased with the pathway system. I think that the commercial mixed-use area that was moved, I think that makes sense. I'm very satisfied with the extra, that extra buffer strip that was a lot added along Highway sixteen and Floating Feather as you get to the Highway sixteen. So thank you for making those changes. I think this is a much better plan and one that fits, you know, our vision and what we're looking for.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Keys?
I'd like to amend my comments if I could. Sometimes I get so wrapped up in the intricacies of the code and the comp plan that I forget other things. So I'd like to echo what my fellow counselors have said. I think you've really brought your A-game to make this project a lot better. I think you put an awful lot of work into trying to respect our requests for right-of-way protection for commercial opportunities in the future. Don't know what that's going to be, but we've protected the opportunity, which I think is the key part. I think the project concept that you brought us tonight is improved over the last one. And I really did want to say I do appreciate your efforts into that. So with that, Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Keys?
Would you entertain a motion?
I would entertain a motion. I'm sure half these people would, too.
Yeah, it's getting late.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve Rostai Farms' subdivision annexation zoning AZ dash two zero dash oh three and preliminary plat and planned unit development PP slash PUD dash twenty dash oh two.
Do we have to make any mention of the development agreement and stuff in that? Yes.
We'll be adding the development agreement and add those phasing, that they phasing language in.
And with the two items that we talked about or that I asked for in the development agreement that applicant agreed to. So the retaining the trees?
Yes, tree retention, yes.
Yeah, which we already have permission from the ditch company.
That was the easiest one we ever did.
That counts as your letter. And then what was the second one?
And I think she said it's in there, but if it's not in there, about requiring open-style fences along the north river.
She indicated it'd be along the ditch banks and everything, so.
I will second that motion.
Was there any other conditions or anything that we need to put in?
No, I did make a misstatement, though. I said forty-three times faster. It's forty-three percent faster.
So we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Welcome to the city. Okay, Item six D has, the Star River Holdings DA modification for Crystal Springs has been tabled to August eighteenth, twenty twenty, per the applicant's request. And we will going to take a quick five-minute recess before we continue on. Oh, yeah, let me get your thumb dry stuff out. Hang on a second. Let me close it all out. That was the packets. Okay, we're going to get this, item six-E going, the public hearing for Canopy Estates subdivision. Ask council, is there any ex parte contact in this application?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I've had no ex parte contact, but just for full disclosure, I do want people to know that I'm Mary Jane, the applicant's neighbor. And I consider her my friend, so.
All right.
Oh, then I'm probably your neighbor too, because I live super close to you. Oh, I'm not as friendly, though, so.
All right, so we're going to have the applicant come up. You have twenty minutes, ma'am, to present. And if you can speak as best as you can into that microphone there. I don't know if we need to take it down or...
Can you hear me?
There we go. Yep.
Okay, Mary Jane Marlowe, the residence address is four-eight-five South Winslow Bayway, Star Idaho. Good evening, Mayor Chadwick and council members. Thank you for considering my application to annex and rezone a Canopy Estates. The address is one-oh-six-oh-nine New Hope Road for an R-three-dash-D-A development agreement. I think you have the narrative that I wrote in your packet. So I'm just going to say a few things about that narrative and then make this very short. What we have now is a fifteen-lot residential lot, a small park, and a couple of other common areas. So we have three common areas and fifteen residential lots. The lots really are nice size. They're larger lot sizes, ninety-five-hundred to ten-thousand-six-hundred-plus square feet. And that's really better than the close-by, close-by subs, which those are large subs, which that's understandable. We have eight-foot parkways, and that provides a really nice tree-lined street. I'm glad to see that Rustai Farms is going to be doing that as well. We have more trees in the park that meets, over-meets your code and what it requires. So actually, your staff report, we're going to do this in two phases, as Sean advised me to do, two phases. And the development is consistent with your development plan, comprehensive development plan. And of course, we're going to have a development agreement with the City of Star. And during, I mean, at his request, we're going to put together a final street light plan. ACHD has approved it as well, standard conditions upon approval, normal standard conditions. And we're, of course, in agreement with ACHD. Star Fire has approved it with the standard conditions and approval. HRM Pipeline has approved it with the ten-foot wide irrigation on either side of the property line. And ITD spoke to Sarah Ahona today and Erica the other day. And they have approved it. We need a true trip, a distribution information that they would like, and we're working on that now. That's not really an issue. It's not going to be a problem. They do not need a full traffic study, thank goodness. So now that New Hope is a local road, a portion of New Hope is going to be abandoned. You can see that on your plan there. This is a little bit easier to look at. But as New Hope is abandoned roughly right through here, thank you, that property will be purchased by me from ACHD when they get the right-of-way and they get everything settled with Bacon's Bridge coming through. So what's nice is that this will all be a common area, a huge, larger common area with trees and benches and things like that, which will really improve. So here is our exit going to the next property, which I guess CVH Homes, they might, are going to build in there. So you will not be going out onto New Hope Road. So these two lots will have a nice park at the top and as well at the bottom. So, well, this park at the bottom. So I just wanted to let you know that I do intend to purchase that property.
Can I, can I just ask you, just want to clarify. So the top part is where New Hope is currently, right?
Yes, sir.
And so that's going to be the initial entrance and exit until the southern portion develops?
Actually, no. For development purposes, we might be coming through here to build lots. But this is abandoned. It will be abandoned. So the road will be here.
Okay.
So when it's developed, two years, three years, five years, whatever, however long it's going to take, this will be going, going south and then out to Brandon. So we really, ITD has, has approved it with the trip distribution information. And I'm really glad that now it's going to be a local road instead of, let's say, Archery, I guess. Is that right? Material, New Hope? So just a little bit of clarification here. Keller &amp; Associates, Mr. Morgan, apparently didn't realize that the, your UBC and your landscape ordinance now is newer, and you've included the tree selection guide in that. So he thought that Frontier Elms or elm trees in general weren't the trees to plant, but now, but they are. That's about twenty-five, twenty-four years old. And then on your staff report, should we address that or just forget? Okay. On the staff report, just FYI for you, there was just an error. It said that eight-point-two-three was going to be for commercial, but that's not the case. There's not going to be any commercial there. So, any questions?
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Keys?
So on the vicinity map that you furnished, it appears that what's to the south is a camispec subdivision, and where you're showing your road, it looks like it's already platted for lots. Is that, am I misunderstanding that?
That will be changed because I am ahead of CVH. I have my application in before him, or him, her, whatever. And so ACHD, it's first come, first served. So that will not be the case. The road will go south, just as it's platted right here.
Okay, and I'm also going to tell you, I did look at the Treasury Rally Tree Selection Guide that we've adopted in our code. And Frontier Elms, in fact, are named in there as a, as a recommended tree.
It's a very nice tree.
Any further questions?
I noticed in the staff report, it says that fencing is not shown on the submitted plat or landscape plan. And do you have any plans for the fencing?
Yes, we did include the fencing on where the fence would be, correct? Oh, I, I really don't know if it's going to be vinyl or what. But of course, there will be fencing. We can provide that. This is, this is the...
Okay.
Can I answer your question?
It does.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, all right, thank you, ma'am. So we didn't have anybody sign up to speak? Is there anybody online asking to speak? No? Okay.
I want to think.
You want to rebut anything?
What?
You want to, there's no one there to speak to yet.
No, I, I thank you for the opportunity, and I hope you accept the application. And I can't thank Sean enough for helping me through this whole thing. It's very good.
Any other questions of staff before we close the public hearing?
Sorry, I have one more question. So it looks like there's a ditch companies around the property somewhere. Has, have we received a response from them? Okay, should we?
It's in the packet.
I did not see. I didn't see it.
It's HRM.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, from HRM.
Yeah, HRM Pipeline. We received their, their information about that. They would like the easement on either side.
Oh, okay, so...
It's this one right here, I believe.
Yes, okay. So that is the same as the Farmers Union Ditch Company? No.
No, it's the HRM Pipeline.
Which...
The HRM delivers water to the Farmers Union. The other way around. To the HRM. Okay, the other way around.
Okay. Is there any issues with, I guess, is there any issues with the irrigation?
No, that, that letter kind of explains what...
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure.
It just says they must recognize the right-of-way for the cleaning and maintenance repair on that. And that's a pretty standard letter that we get, so.
Mr. Mayor, I have, do you have a question for either Jim or Mary Jane? So you mentioned that the the access will go away onto New Hope in the future? Is that what you were saying once the...
Yeah, once the, the final Bacon's Bridge is figured out. Stacy has said that they have accepted how that's going to play out with what you already have with the property to the north.
So the question is, what type of turnaround are you going to have? Because you're going to obviously need to meet fire emergency turnaround once that road goes away.
It's down here. It's at the bottom.
If you're going to be getting rid of the access to the north, how are you going to, how are they going to get up there and turn? Future. If your access is going to be from the south, once Cory Barton develops, how are you going to turn around fire vehicles on the north?
Go ahead and answer that, Jim.
I think that will have to be worked out with Star Fire.
What's that? So you're, are you, so are you going to, you're going to put a cul-de-sac in those lots, those two lot twos that we're going to do?
I'd imagine probably.
Or do a hammerhead up there or something?
Hammerhead right there now where...
Okay. So I guess just make sure you work that out with the fire chief. Because he'll want that turnaround at some point. This is the first I heard that they were not going to have that access in the future, so.
That they were going to abandon the...
Yeah, I didn't know, I didn't know they were going to abandon that access.
Yeah, I think I, I hope I CC'd you on that from Stacy, where she said that we have accepted whatever the company is to the, the people to the north, that big subdivision, Greenfield or something.
So it's missing.
They, they have accepted that, so.
Right.
You mean Bacon's? It's Bacon's, it's Bacon's Bridge, not floating feathers.
So, so then I guess will it not go away, or we still have access to that north?
Access what?
We'll have to, we'll need to check, because I thought there was something with the, that's that Glendale and you know, row that we had above, where we changed that access into the center of that subdivision to go back over to...
No, I, I know that they're going to, they're going to make New Hope a local street and discontinue it, but the question is, she's just stated that
She's buying it.
She's going to buy that frontage, and so that access will go away for her. Mr. Mayor?
Access, my access to get onto New Hope?
Yeah.
Yes, it will go away.
Okay. So that's why I'm saying you need, you need to have a turnaround for
Yeah.
Fire. And that's, I'm just...
So what happens, I believe, is you're coming west on New Hope. You're going to make a little curve, a queue, and go up to Bacon's Bridge, make another curve, and come to Brandon, and go south again. That's what they've approved so far.
So here's, here's ACHD's comments regarding that, right here.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes, you may.
So if you look at the ACHD staff report at the top of page seven, they're showing the entrance on New Hope. Oh, there it is, right there. Okay. Said the entrance to be closed with a cul-de-sac in the future. And then if you read in section D there, staff comments, recommendations, it says the applicant's proposal meets district policy and should be approved as proposed, however, as stated above in C-one, because New Hope Road between Galen Way and Brandon Road is proposed to be vacated or exchanged in the future with the realignment of Beacon Light Road. The entrance road to this site, Canopy Street, will be required to be closed consistent with ACHD policy with an approved turnaround cul-de-sac at the Canopy-New Hope intersection when access is provided via the adjacent proposed development. And it goes on, but that's...
So that answers the question.
That answers the question. I'm just wondering if, if there should be a drawing that shows that, and is there enough room in the right-of-way that they're going to, that you're going to purchase to actually build a, an acceptable cul-de-sac?
Well, I think there should be, however, I can't put a drawing together when they are not completed yet.
No, but you can put together something that shows what's there in the future. Okay, so they say, so they, so they say cul-de-sac, and you make sure you get that approved from the fire district, so I'm getting that. Because you're talking two different things, so. Getting that on the record.
Thank you.
Any other questions, miss?
Yeah, so it does, from the fire district. From the fire district, it does say they require twenty-eight feet, is that correct? Let's see, minimum inside turning radius for a fire apparatus, apparatus is twenty-eight feet. Outside radius of forty-eight feet. Ensure that all radiuses for the straight curves and intersections meet this requirement. So, so that...
That's for, that's for the cul-de-sac they have on the south.
Okay.
Right. They didn't, they didn't review ACHD's report, or they made that letter. I'm just pointing out that...
They just make a condition of approval.
We'll want to, we want to revise preliminary plat showing how you're going to do your turnaround in the future when that goes away.
On the final plat.
Yep, well, preliminary plat, yeah. Let's make that a condition.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay, close this public hearing. We'll go to council deliberations.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman?
With the new condition of putting in whatever it's going to be, and the fire chief blessing it, I see no reason why we shouldn't approve this.
Okay, any other comments, deliberations, any motions? Or motions?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Keys?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the, what's the name of the subdivision? Canopy Estates subdivision, annexation zoning AZ dash two-zero dash zero-seven, development agreement DA dash two-zero dash zero-six, and preliminary plat for Canopy Estates subdivision PP dash two-zero dash zero-six, with the condition of approval that we received an updated letter from the chief accepting the proposed turnaround device at the north end upon the abandonment of the Beacon Light right-of-way.
Okay, I second that.
We got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, that motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to item six-F. Public hearing on the recreation fees. Got to find it here. Public hearing on the recreation fees. Got to find it here. Basically, what we're doing, and I'll be the applicant, I guess, in this one. The old fees with the Star Recreation went by class, by the different activity or athletics and gave a specific dollar amount. And every time they want to create a new class or a sporting event, they would have to bring it before council to establish a fee. So we are trying to streamline this process and make it a little bit easier. So we're, want to institute new fees for both indoor and outdoor activities. For instance, adult classes and activities ages 16 and older will say not to exceed $250 per class or activity, and then those classes can be priced out accordingly for those classes. Adult sports age 16 and older not to exceed $60 per player. Youth classes, activities, and camps age 6 to 15 not to exceed $100 per class, activity, or camp. Youth sports age 6 to 15 not to exceed $60 per player. Preschool classes, activities, and camps ages 1 through 5 not to exceed $100 per class, activity, or camp. And non-residents will be charged a higher fee for each of the above activities. Material kits for classes and activities, the price is not to exceed the cost of materials. Sports uniform fee, the price is not to exceed the cost of the uniform. Camp class instructor lead fees not to exceed 70% of the total fee of the class. Umpire referee fees not to exceed $35 per game, and refund fees are only going to be $5 per request. There's a fee for us to do the refund, which is $5 per request, no more than two requests per year for citizen. Any questions relating to this? So, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, that looks good to me. My only question was the umpire referee fee. That is per umpire slash referee, not per game, total game, right?
Right. Well, it's per, per, per game fee for the umpire or referee, and it's going to depend on the sport. The sports, they're different.
Okay, so just to make sure I understand correctly, so say for...
So let's say baseball.
Yeah.
I'll say baseball. So you have an umpire and a field, you have an umpire behind the plate and a field umpire, right? So the umpire behind the plate may get $25 a game, the umpire in the field may get $15 a game.
Okay.
But it's not the total.
Yeah, gotcha. That's what it's just meant.
Right, that's what you're asking me. It's not, it's not for the total, it's per person, correct.
And Mr. Mayor, just, may, Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Keys.
I just want to clarify that this resolution's been written as a not to exceed. This is not suggesting that those fees are going to jump up to those numbers. It's just to provide some headroom for some flexibility so that we can be a little more fleet of foot in adjusting program fees as we need to.
Correct, and it's, it gives us the range of classes are different in fees and their fee structure.
And may I assume that writing that as a not to exceed basis is still consistent with, with the statute, and I'm sure it would be, or the attorney would be jumping around the room right now.
Chris has reviewed this, and the City of Eagle has just recently adopted a similar structure.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
This is an easier way to do it, and when I had my meeting with Ronnie Kim, they didn't have any objections that I was aware of, and so I say just go with it.
Okay.
I don't think we have to vote vote, but...
We do need to vote, though. I need to close the public hearing. Or is there, I forgot to open the public hearing. I apologize on that. No one signed up to speak. Okay, so we're going to open the public hearing. No one's signed up to speak, so we're going to close this public hearing. So we would have the, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Keys.
I'd like to make a motion that council adopt Resolution Number 2020-03, a resolution of the City of Star, Idaho, adopting a new schedule of fees for recreation activities, both indoor and outdoor, classifying age group fees, material kit fees, uniform fees, and instructor umpire referee fees, establishing non-resident fees, and adding a processing fee for refunds, providing for an effective date.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. I was actually listening for somebody to oppose. All right. Item, item seven. Executive session. We need to have a motion to go into executive session?
Does this break our rule of starting something after 10 o'clock?
No.
Then you're not getting a motion out of me.
So we need a motion to go into executive session?
Right. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Keys.
I'd like to make a motion that council go into executive session under Idaho Code Statute 74-061C, real property negotiations.
I'll second.
Councilwoman Hershey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Keys?
Aye.
Councilwoman Solmanson?
Aye.
Okay, we are going to go into executive session. Everybody is invited to exit the room.